All right, it is seven thirty. I'll call the meeting to order. Has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Moving on to recognitions. Anybody from the board have anything?
I would just like to recognize Westview's admin team. I think they do a phenomenal job at being calm in times when they need to flex and make changes when it comes to anything that's going on, whether it's with the students. I've had an opportunity to sit there and just watch them in action in the office, and they are phenomenal. I just want to say thank you to them for their caring dedication to the school.
I'd like to recognize the FFA High School for doing a petting zoo for the 4K and 5K this week. It was a fun opportunity for them. And also our local law enforcement, there was a K-9 officer at Westview today, and I got to hear all about that, and that was a very exciting opportunity for our students.
You know, I don't know if this will come up in one of the building reports, but the scholarship night was fabulous, just all that community support. It's amazing to see what it has become and how we support our students and how the community gives back, but also it gets back from those students, too. Quite fabulous.
To build off some previous comments, I too would like to recognize the principals. May first was the Principal's Day, and they should just be commended for all of the work that they do, not only during the school year, but, you know, in the off months in the summer as well as nights and weekends. So, thank you, principals, for all that you provide our students. Lot of things happening at the high school. Mentioned one of my favorite events of the school year is the scholarship awards night, and every year it continues to grow, and it's just fantastic. I think one of the things that stood out to me, just to share with the board, the number of memorial and legacy gifts where the families were there to present. And I'll just mention one in particular, a former teacher here at the middle school, Rachel Deneen, her family, for the first year, had a memorial scholarship in her honor, and the family stuck around and took picture with the student that received it and sent me a beautiful email just saying how much it meant to them. And it was just one of those moments where things kind of came together. It's like, oh, this is why we do this. It was impactful to the giver, and I know it's going to be impactful to the student that received it. So, very proud of that and very proud of, yeah, all the work that went into that. So, really wonderful night. Another wonderful night coming up. I did check the ten-day forecast. I'll probably be checking it way too often for the next ten days, but very excited for another perfect night on May twenty-third at seven o'clock. That's not what's in the forecast right now, but I know it's going to change. So, I was actually glad that it wasn't perfect, because then I would just grow increasingly disappointed. But now I'm just going to get increasingly more excited as the forecast changes. But appreciate all the board members that have RSVPed. It'll be a part of that. And I mentioned it tonight, we had a Kiwanis Student of the Month recognition, but the support of our board for our community is really outstanding. And it's at events like Teacher Appreciation Week, when a board member shows up to cook brats and hot dogs for us, or Scholarship Night, the number of people that were there, the response we had to be part of graduation and graduation practice really makes me appreciate being part of this district. So, thank you all.
Good evening. A few things that I wanted to share. Tonight was in this very room, we've been doing lots of collaboration with the high school and our high school counselors and teachers to be able to host AP testing over here at the middle school. So, yes, we've been so happy to have-
Some people on our roof at the high school, not a great testing environment right now.
So, we were just really thankful to be able to have this wonderful space for our high schoolers to have quiet, have bathrooms if they need them, have lots of space. And so, the versatility of this room has been on point the last couple of weeks and being able to host our high school students who are really working hard on their AP exams. So, just kind of wanted to update you on what has been used in the space so far. A really big shout-out to our teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week last week, and a thank you to our PTOs who were incredibly supportive and had lots of fun ways to recognize our teachers and the hard work that they do. One last celebration that I wanted to share was also in this room. In a couple of weeks, we're going to host the Platteville Community Fund Grant Applicant Celebration. If you're familiar with the Platteville Community Fund, they're incredibly supportive of a lot of different events and a lot of different community areas here in Platteville. They also have the EIE, or Excellence in Education, grants, and quite a few of our educators applied for those grants and were awarded those grants for different things, like Ms. Russell is going to be getting another keyboard in her classroom. And, oh, I can't say that.
It's confidential, but go ahead.
Is it? I am so sorry. Congratulations, everyone.
There'll be an update next month.
Okay. Well, let me just say, there are some educators who are going to be getting grants for really exciting things in their classrooms. So, that is going to be, we're going to have that held in the hub in a few weeks, too. So, one of the focuses that we have here at the middle school in the last few weeks is really spending the last however many days that we have. I think we're at fifteen, four something, and making sure that we make every minute of those last few days count that we have with our students. We don't clock out until the day after the kids do, so we're working all the way up until the end. So, excited for the last few weeks of celebration and ending the year strong.
I won't mention names or things they received, but I had a couple of teachers receive grants also that will be here, and I had a couple of other teachers apply for different grants. Kira Driscoll received a grant which she found and is able to get decodable readers for the first grade. And then there was an egg-in-the-classroom grant that Michelle Sasse applied for and was able to get money to help support their spring reading curriculum, which is based on plants, and so they're going to add some things to that. The other thing I wanted to also give a shout-out to our teachers and last week's Teacher Appreciation Week, PTO helped me provide a wonderful week with a wicked theme for the teachers. We had a lot of donations from parents, whether it was gift cards, cash, food, lots and lots of food. And also had lunch donated by Locos Amigos one day. We had coffee donated by Badger Brothers, some things donated by the Black Smock. And then there's something else. Well, I think Walmart donated cupcakes to every school. They brought those in, and there was somebody else that donated something, and I'm forgetting somebody. But anyway, and then coming up this Friday is the fourth grade track meet, and then fourth and fifth grade track meet, so if anybody's interested in coming up there. And then we just have a lot of things going on for our classes that relate to, and field trips that relate to our curriculum. Third grade will be going to the Courthouse. They'll be going to the Cave of the Boughs. Fourth grade has the Mining Museum, Mississippi River Museum, which their tour relates directly to Wisconsin history. All of the things they do are connected usually to Wisconsin history. First grade's doing the trail, Mining Museum, and it's different. They do different things. Second grade will be going to Folklore Village, and they've been having community partners come in and present, and that's where the sheriff came in. So, we have a lot going on in our building. And then today, connected to the trail visit for first grade, Sue Kaiser came in and talked to first grade about her book, Sassy. And then there's a group that has helped each year get donations so that every student in first grade can receive a copy of her book. So, we've started this a couple of years ago, and she comes in, they all get a copy of the book, and she talks about the book and the trail, and then they will go on the trail on Friday also in the morning. They usually, they've been growing milkweed to plant on the trail because it helps sustain the soil, plus it attracts butterflies, which are becoming extinct, and the monarch butterfly, to be exact. But unfortunately, their milkweed didn't grow this year, so we have to fix that for next year. So, maybe the grant money will help with that. So, those are a lot of things that are going on in our building.
I would like to commend all of our staff. We had the national storm, the hailstorm, close to a month ago now. The difficulty in the buildings primarily was the high school we're on inside, but throughout the district, our staff continued to teach. They just worked around it. And that approach has resonated with our students. And I also have to recognize the amount that what our staff are working through, almost all of them also have personal damage that they're juggling and trying to get through that. So, it's been a commendable effort by all of our staff.
Thank you. Moving on to opportunity for public input. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay, we will move directly into the information and discussion items, budget update.
Speaking of the hailstorm, the hailstorm, there are significant financial implications of the damage that we've had, and I'll work through that. Through it all, a couple of things to keep in mind. One is, this is facility, so these are costs that aren't every paycheck. These are one-time expenses. Our capital improvement referendum has allowed us to really work ahead of what we normally would in our one, three, five, ten-year plan. So, what the hailstorm has done is it has accelerated some of those bigger projects, and we'll get into those details. So, some key numbers. The maintenance budget that we approved at our annual meeting was a little over a million. So far, we have expended about six hundred thousand. We are projected to have about four hundred thousand, four hundred forty-four thousand dollars at the end of our fiscal year, June thirty. We also have four hundred thousand left over from the capital improvement efforts. Those numbers are key because when we look at the damage that was done is all told, right now, about two million dollars. Because we have insurance, the end bill we are predicting right now is for the district to be about one million. So, we have four hundred from the capital referendum. We have four hundred forty in our maintenance budget, four hundred forty-four thousand. So, there's that remaining hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We, at our annual meeting, we approved our budget at that time. We also found out that our fund balance was at twenty-five percent. Our policy in our district is to keep that above fifteen. Where we have found, looking back over the prior years, a fund balance right around twenty, that's enough. In the high teens is where we're comfortable with it when it comes to short-term borrowing and those considerations. But this is one-time event. Through insurance, through the money that we have, we're able to get through this cost and not be in any financial concern. So now, let's also get into the big items that are damaged are our roofs and our rooftop HVAC units. The roofs that were damaged were our older roofs that were next to be replaced. I'm looking at that in a positive light, saying with insurance, that has lessened that burden. The negative part of it is it's accelerated when we wanted to do it. We'd like to be able to schedule that out. But the roofs, the HVAC is kind of a hit and miss. Some of those units were older, some of them were newer. The hail didn't care. And that one will take a little more research because with all of those units, they have those fins, and when a piece of hail hit it, it's just, it's brilliant as far as the damage there. You can just see it. So now the debate is, do you comb through those fins? That sometimes doesn't work to get back the efficiency of them. Do you replace the fin? Or is it just as economical to put in a whole new HVAC piece? That's what's taken a little bit of time, working through all of that. The roofs are pretty straightforward. Both have been approved at the middle school. Durlast has been, that's damaged. They're going to replace that. The high school durlast. So, the funding strategy is to use capital referendum, use what's left over through maintenance, and then use our fund balance. Any questions so far?
Just a general insurance question. Why are we at a million of our costs?
So, our plan-
Depreciation?
Well, our plan that we chose last year was your deductible, start at twenty-five, but then it's one percent of your building's value. So, at the high school, that deductible is over four hundred thousand dollars because that's a forty-one million dollar building. If it's one percent, and in this building, it's not as much. It might be two hundred and fifty, that deductible. So, that's the reason why. And if you recall last year, when we were looking into our business insurance, the message we received was, this is what you do, which is peculiar because later on, we have a business insurance that was offered for next year in which we are back to a deductible. We chose last year to go with the one percent of building value to save money on the premium. And that's where the insurance is really heading, I think, all told, for businesses. This year, we had this bid before the hailstorm. So, that's why that deductible is at high.
High school's forty-eight million currently on the proposal.
And did they then take depreciation to make it up? Because my math roughly is that's like seven hundred thousand.
So, depreciation, I don't believe is factored into this.
Okay.
The added cost there would be all of the HVAC units on top of Westview are damaged. So, then you weigh one percent of Westview building or just fix the HVAC. Don't claim it, fix it. Same thing at Neil Lowkens. There's where those other dollars are at, primarily.
Understood.
Okay. And Dimitri provided a list of the things. What, like the garage shed, the high school garage shed? This is an interesting one to talk about because the north side and the north side vinyl siding was like everybody else, north side, peppered. Not turning that in. We have a crew that can learn, peel off that siding, put it back up. And I believe it's, I think it's scheduled during the summer with that summer construction crew. But what would have been the damage if our leased vans were out in the open? So, factor the siding in that, I believe the end, there was a sixty thousand dollar build that shed. It also protected a lot of our vehicles. So, I am, this was unfortunate. Nobody was hurt. We're able to withstand it. It's a lot of work that we didn't plan on doing. So, we'll keep on-
I'm a square bar.
It still works, and we've tested it many times just in case.
Yeah.
But it does. It wasn't damaged. There are, on the backside, you can see some cosmetic.
But it works.
That's the first thing I thought of, like, oh, God.
It's facing the wrong direction.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on the budget update? All right, we'll move on to the items on the consent agenda.
Inside of our consent agenda, we have the meetings, the minutes of the previous meeting, the financial report and bills for the month of April. Total receipts, five hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars, forty cents. Total disbursements, two million, fifty-two thousand, twenty-eight dollars, ninety-one cents, and all of the line items to follow. We have the high school auditorium manager and tech director resignation, high school assistant coach, boys soccer resignation, forensic speech team head coach, musical assistant director, full-length play assistant director resignation, Westview Special Education Assistant resignation, high school part-time food service resignation, the new hire for the twenty-five, twenty-six high school musical director, new hire for part-time food service, that is replacing the one that has resigned. And then the second final reading of three sixty-one.
So, we've got a motion by Colleen, a second by Keisha, to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. I give a motion and a second, please, to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Betsy, to approve the adoption of the agenda. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on to action items. First item up is the election of school board officers.
Annual event. I will lead the election of the president, and once the president is elected, the president will then handle the rest of the election process. To begin with, I would accept nominations for school board president.
I nominate Josh Cravat.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed with one candidate. Seeing as how we just have the one candidate, I will do a voice vote. All those in favor of electing Josh Cravat as the school board president, please respond with aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign? Abstentions?
Go ahead and state. Okay. I'm not getting financially.
Josh, congratulations as the president.
Appreciate it.
And we'll have Lisa here to help with the other nominations.
Okay, the Norman Rockwell can is back. Let's go on, move on to vice president. At this time, Colleen is our vice president. Accept nominations for vice president.
I nominate Colleen for vice president.
Okay, so we have Colleen, nomination for vice president. Do we have any other nominations for vice president? Any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none, and there is only one nominee for vice president, we will put it forward to a voice vote. All those in favor for Colleen to be reelected as vice president, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Colleen. We will now move on to clerk. The current clerk is Matt Zalinski. Do I have any nominations for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Betsy Rolfe-Talison.
I have a nomination for Betsy for clerk. Any other nominations? Any other nominations for clerk? Hearing no other nominations, we will put it forward to a voice vote. At this time, all those in favor of Betsy Rolfe-Talison as clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Betsy Rolfe-Talison, you are now the new clerk. Thank you. Next up, we have treasurer. Currently Kurt is serving as our treasurer. Anybody have a nomination for treasurer?
I nominate Kurt for treasurer.
We have Kurt for treasurer. Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Hearing none, we will go to voice vote for treasurer Kurt Timlin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Kurt Timlin is the treasurer. Next up is WASB delegate, currently Steve Overshaw. Any nominations for WASB delegate?
I would like to nominate Steve Overshaw. Well, thank you.
Any other nominees for WASB delegate? Any other nominees for WASB delegate? Hearing none, we will vote for Steve Overshaw for WASB delegate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Final one is the CISA III delegate, which is currently Keisha King. Do I have any nominations for the CISA III delegate?
I nominate Keisha King.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, we will vote at this time for CISA III delegate, Keisha King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Keisha King, CISA III delegate. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I will take a motion and a second, please, for the following school board officers as presented. Myself, Josh Cravat as president. Vice president will be Colleen McCade. Betsy Rolfe-Talison will be clerk, Kurt Timlin as treasurer, Steve Overshaw as WASB delegate, and CISA III delegate as Keisha King.
I'll move.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Kurt, second by Ashley, to approve the election of the school board officers as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on to the second action item.
Seven B Middle School Math Interventionist resignation. It's my recommendation to accept.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Keisha, to approve the resignation of Kelly Gillian.
Gillian.
Yep, Gillian's resignation as the middle school math interventionist as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on to new hire of an English teacher.
So, administration's recommendation to approve the hiring of Ellie Lender for high school English.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Matt. Motion by Matt, second by Colleen, to approve the hiring of Ellie Linder as high school education, or high school English teacher, excuse me, for the twenty-four or twenty-five, twenty-six school years presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries. New hired district maintenance specialist.
It is administration's recommendation to approve the hiring of Zane Graciana for that position.
So move.
Or second.
Motion by Keisha, second by Kurt, to approve the hiring of Zane Graciana as the district maintenance specialist as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries, new hire of an eighth grade ELA teacher.
Administration is recommending hiring Ryan Pink for the middle school eighth grade ELA teacher position.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Ashley, to approve the hiring of Ryan Pink as the middle school eighth grade ELA teacher as presented. Any questions or comments on that?
Is he currently a coach?
So Brandon Pink is currently a teacher at the high school. But what Ryan has done, beginning in the twenty-twenty-one school year, he served in a variety of long-term substitute positions for us. All the while, getting and achieving his teacher licensure. So it's really a homegrown effort.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries on to a resolution.
So this is completing the defeasance that we approved at our annual meeting in October. And included are a couple of graphs that that lay out what we're accomplishing, but by being able to defees eight hundred thousand that we did in October, not only does that work on the principal, it also in the long-term debt payment saves the district five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So that's that's one of the reasons why we defees. It just, the schedule of events, it waits until this time of year to have it approved and then we execute.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Steve, to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation refunding funds dated bonds, excuse me, dated March second, twenty-twenty-three as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries, open enrollment.
Annual event due to state law that we have to review and approve. These are new applications. That's why it's a smaller number. If you recall, in the late summer, early fall, we'll have the total third Friday count, how many actually moved. These are proposed, they may do this, they may not. But part of the process is to approve these new ones.
Do we know, keep track as a district of where those students are leaving, you know, going and are or leaving from as far as like, to see if there are any trends. Are they family-based or are they specific school-based, grade-based?
We currently, you you track that through the state forum, so when when a student goes to another district, there's communication because we have to share records. But in, I think it was March, early March, the Southwest Regional Planning Commission, they had been contacting and working with me throughout the school year, there's that map. And what we're going to do is start to specifically track the families that open enroll out and in. But we have a a script in which one of our staff members is going to call them all and find this information, use that map and start to discover those trends that we're after.
So we don't have like specifics, like whether or not there's like a chunk from the middle school or is it more in the high school that are leaving or coming in?
We can't have that. We have that available, but we haven't really studied it or analyzed it. The prevailing theory is a lot of open enrollment is due to it's where I work, or it's where my family and where I grew up. I just live in a neighboring district. That's the prevailing theory. But we want to find out more. And see if that's true or not.
Thanks. That study is really going to help us. I mean, I I'm getting an answer to some of our questions we've had for years.
I am curious with the special education services. I know we don't have any openings available within our school district. Do we attract any requests for applications in? And do we even, if we deny them, because I know we will have to for this year, do we even offer, do we work with any other school districts to ensure that we get those students into another district, wherever they're coming from?
That's mostly on the family.
Okay.
To answer the first part of the question, yes. It's a it's a network of families and they communicate. And when they know that there is quality service, they'll open enroll in. And there are times where, and I can't chart how many times this has happened, but if we're capped, they've moved into district. Because once you're in district, you're you're out. We serve it. That's an option that families do as well. Looking for a motion in a second.
Second.
Heard a motion by Kurt, a second by Keisha, to approve twelve open enrollment in applications, to deny one open enrollment in application due to no special education service level openings for all grades, and to approve eighteen open enrollment out applications for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. Any other questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries on to handbook and wages.
This has been forwarded through operations and with the handbook language, there are three items addressed. One is including cellphone language in the employee handbook. Another one is about presenteeism, trying to encourage that to where if an employee and it's not FMLA, it's not ADA-related, if they accumulate two or more unpaid days, then we have the ability to freeze their salary for the next year. And then the other one is getting some vaping language in for staff. So those are the language changes. And the rest of it would be applying the one percent of the mean to the different employee groups.
Do we have any feedback for staff, teachers, faculty?
With the language changes, I'm, the process is, I'll collect different ideas throughout the year. I'll share that with all staff, host a meeting. With the vaping, yep, they're all, yeah. With the cellphone, much like the law, if you remember when Steve said, you know, read the proposal before you criticize it. They put some language in there, so then it would be, I'm on a duty-free lunch. Duty-free lunch means duty-free. And so they put some qualifiers in with that. There was some discussion with the presenteeism with, you know, if you have unpaid days. And it boils down to we have one hundred and seventy-three opportunities to serve our kids. We're trying to discourage somebody from just taking a week off. And hopefully that has some second guessing or maybe some other planning with that. And it's a it's a small amount of our employees. This isn't a rampant issue with our employees whatsoever. It just isn't. But it's just having something to say if you continually to take these days off with unpaid, there's got to be something from the district's point of view that we can say, okay, here's your choice, here's what happens. Looking for a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, Ashley, to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six handbook, employee handbook and wages as presented. Any questions or comments on that?
Will that be up for reconsideration, say, you don't get the response that you hoped to have, that you would consider changing it? I'm not a big fan of making policies for all, but for few, right? If it's a few people making like a broad policy that applies to everybody, especially when we're looking to reward people, we're, you know, we have a policy here that's admonishing. That if if we don't get the response that you hope for, would you be open to changing it next year?
Yep, annually.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. On to the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six wage matrix non-contracted support.
So the different employee groups are listed here and the one percent of the mean is applied to those groups. And now it's advancing through all of those groups.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Steve, to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six non-contracted support staff and updated wage matrix as presented. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
We had, just for the record, two abstentions. One? One. Okay. Motion carries. On to the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six non-exempt staff without individual contracts.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Ashley, to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six non-exempt staff without individual contracts as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And on to the staff with individual contracts. The recommendation is to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six staff with individual contracts under state statute and professional exempt non-supervisory employees. Need a motion and a second please.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, sorry, motion by Ashley.
Yeah.
I can still hear. Second by Steve, to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six staff with individual contracts under state statute. One eighteen point two-two Wisconsin statute and professional and exempt non-supervisory employees as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to the administrative contracts.
Second.
Recommendation is to approve the administrative contracts as presented.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Keisha, second by Kurt, to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six administrative contracts as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Abstentions?
Aye. Sorry, it was the one before I was at.
No problem.
You're covered now.
Motion carries. On to some policy reviews.
First reading of the primarily three forty-one, three forty-five, these are all doing, these are all relating to the Act Twenty, the new state expectations around reading. And these have been forwarded through policy without changes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Betsy, second by Matt, to approve the first reading of policy three forty-one point one, the reading instructional goals, rule three forty-five point four, rule two, third and fourth grade promotion, and three forty-five point four, the artifact district literacy plan Act Twenty checklist. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries on to business insurance.
It's our time annually to update our business insurance. The proposal that is present is an increase in premium, the deductible has changed.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Ashley, to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six business insurance as presented. Any questions or comments on that?
Yes, just as we talked earlier about the damage. So what what's our deductible?
Twenty-five thousand. In the upcoming year, when we start our new fiscal year, it will be twenty-five per event per structure.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries on to athletic training agreements.
Again, approving a partnership with Southwest Health that has been very productive for our students and staff.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Steve, to approve the full-time Southwest Health Center Athletic Training Agreement proposal as presented. That's a tough one. Any questions or comments on that?
I would like to make sure that we have, we formalize some type of performance evaluation that also looks at user and so the student, athlete, or parent.
Any other questions or comments?
So do you want that amended before we approve it?
I just, we talked about it and.
Yeah, I don't think it's finalized yet.
It's not finalized.
No, I don't know. It's pretty fine to me.
We're voting over it. So we need to add that, a more formal.
Well, there there should be, because this was the first that Mike even knew about this. I mean, they're adding something. I'm not sure it's a really robust evaluation. And it isn't really touching the people who are the end user. So I I'm not necessarily in favor of that evaluation matrix.
Yeah, yep, the the, your point is understood.
Yep.
And we'll carry through with a a more formal evaluation in which the users can participate and then we share that with Southwest Health.
Will we be able to see that evaluation prior to
Yes.
it being put into use?
Yes, it's planned later this summer when we are starting to kick off the the next school year and then when those activities start to begin.
So do we want to amend the motion, for example, with an acceptable evaluation plan?
I think it's a friendly
Okay.
discussion that we've had. I'm fine with it. I just need it to be on record.
Any other questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Keisha, to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries, we are adjourned at eight sixteen PM. Thank you, everyone.